Now, an example of a public conference is CSBA. If a quorum of your board, a majority of your board, go to CSB. An example, I'm going to use the example again of the city of Antioch has a meeting about traffic and traffic concerns. And the board is really concerned about traffic in front of a particular school site and what the city is going to do about it. Five board members can go to that. You can stand up during public comment and make public comment. You can identify yourselves as board members. What you do is go back and sit in the audience to that appearance. People are going to assume what you're talking about. There was an actual incident in Pleasanton that made the newspapers 15 years ago, probably, where a majority of the city council all went out to breakfast together at the Buttercup Pantry. I don't know why I always remember the Buttercup Pantry, but they went to the Buttercup Pantry to have breakfast, and they did it with the intent of getting to know each other better. They talked about their family, they talked about their kids, and there was a front-page newspaper article the next day. Quorum of city council meets at restaurant without noticing meeting, and it was a great big to-do. I'm not sure that there was any merit to that. I don't think there was any merit to that. But again, it was a black eye on the city. It makes people suspicious. So you just have to think about appearances, sort of talk it through. The last two categories, these are in the Brown Act, and I'm going to give you Harold's rule now, which is ignore that these rules exist because they're a really bad idea. But they're in the Brown Act that you can attend a standing committee as an observer. What that means is that if this board appoints a standing committee, and I'll give you an example, a classic example of what a standing committee is. If you pass a bond, you have to have a citizens' bond oversight committee under the applicable laws. That is a board-appointed standing committee, and we'll talk more about committees in a bit. If you go and you watch that committee meeting, that's not a Brown Act violation, even if a majority of you go just as observers. You can't participate. But I will tell you right now, if a majority of the board goes to any of your standing committee meetings, the committee meetings are going to be the least productive meetings you will ever hear, because every conversation that's had, they're all going to look over at the board to see what, are you nodding? Are you shaking your head? It's a difficult governance issue to have. I think that rule exists for places like Los Angeles Unified School District that has, I think, 11 or 15 board members or something like that, with hundreds of standing committees where they go to each other's committee's meetings, because it's so many people. With five board members, you should almost never have to do that. The Brown Act also suggests that you can attend a staff meeting. If the superintendent's meeting with their staff, that it's not a Brown Act violation for a quorum of you to go and observe that. I will tell you right now, if you have a quorum of board members showing up at a staff meeting, it will be the shortest, quickest, least effective staff meeting in the world. Let your staff do their jobs. So it's on the books, but it's not recommended by any means. We talked a little bit on the next slide about this notion of serial communications. This is this chain link notion, and there's a quote down at the bottom of the page from the attorney general. The attorney general has a Brown Act handbook that is terribly outdated, but has some good language in it. And what they say about this is that "A serial meeting is a series of communications, each of which involves less than a quorum of a legislative body, but which taken as a whole involves a majority of the board's members." So we talked about before. So person A talks to B, person B talks to C, C talks to D, and all of a sudden you have a board meeting. So that's the example that's at the top of the next page, again, from the Brown Act handbook. But on the middle slide here, I also want to point out, that's one way to violate the Brown Act, is through these serial meetings. The other one is what is often called the hub-and-spoke approach. And the attorney general has language on this again that's helpful. "Similarly, when a person acts as the hub of a wheel, member A, and communicates individually with the various spokes, members B and C, a serial meeting has occurred." That means is, one of you cannot call each of the others individually and discuss the matter or poll them and say, "Well, we didn't have A talk to B, talk to C, so we didn't get to three." Well, but you got to five, because they were talking to them. Interestingly, there was a case where an attorney, a city attorney, called each of the five city council members to ask how they were going to vote on something, and that was found to be a Brown Act violation. The city attorney wasn't a member of that body, but he was acting as the hub to get the city council members to vote on something without it being in the public eye.
So by my mind, one board member can talk to one board member, and that's it?
Mm-hmm. That's the basic rule. And you have to be careful sometimes by leading off and saying, "Have you discussed this with anybody else?" I'm going to tell you, I have a true horror story to tell you, which I hate to speak ill of other districts I've worked with, and I won't name the district. I had a district that just went through heck on a situation around this, which is early in the days of emails. This is back, you know, mid-1990s. We had a school district where one board member sent an email to two other board members with his thoughts on a subject that had never been before the board before. He wanted to see it go before the board. He picked the two board members that he sent it to, because they were the board president and the most senior member of the board, somebody who'd been on the board for 20 years. He said right in it, and this gentleman, by the way, was a lawyer on top of it, who sat on the board. He put right in the email, "Please do not respond to this. We don't want a Brown Act problem." And he sent that one way to the other two board members. Now, I would argue that's not a Brown Act violation. And there's law out there that communicating one way is not a Brown Act violation. However, the district attorney in that particular county did not agree with me, and the courts since then have generally not agreed with me. And they've come out with a position that basically says, "Just the one-way transmission of that information can be a contact between the quorum." So the district was found to have violated the Brown Act. And they settled with the district attorney in exchange for no criminal prosecution. Thank you. They agreed, and this is one thing that the district attorney can do, that they had to do three things. One of them was that all communications from one board member to another board member had to go to all of the board members. Counterintuitive, right? Because that's an even bigger Brown Act problem, but that took care of the why these two board members and not the other two. And I'll talk to you later about that, since worked its way into the law and the Brown Act. The second thing is they had to all agree that they would never again email their thoughts on anything to another board member. They could send them to the superintendent, who could gather that, because you're allowed to talk to your superintendent, and it could all come back to the board for information later at a board meeting, for example. But they wouldn't email one another. That's a little extreme, not even one-to-one. And then the third thing, which the district attorney can require under the Brown Act, is they had to record all of their closed sessions and turn the tapes over to the district attorney's office, who would review every one of their closed sessions to see if there was any shenanigans going on under the Brown Act. Those were the shortest closed sessions I've ever attended, because everybody was afraid to say anything. And the district had trouble for a year that the DA did this, taking care of it. And this was all because one board member just said, "I have this thought about doing this," and sent it out to two other people, said, "No reply, didn't say, 'What do you think?'" That's how strictly district attorneys enforce the Brown Act. And actually, since 1995, when that happened, the Brown Act has become even more serious, because the voters of California, you know how they like to have propositions? There was a proposition in 2004 that raised the level of protection for the public to a constitutional level. So the public's right to be informed and made aware of what you all are doing is just as important as your right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I mean, it rises to that level.
Do you have any recent examples, like within the past five years, of any Brown Act violations?
Along those lines, where it's a board member--
Just in general?
Well, the classic example is what went on in the city of Bell, which was the big scandal that took place probably about five years ago or a little bit more, where there were all kinds of back-room dealings going on between staff and a city council, where they were meeting without noticing meetings. And it wasn't even close. There were three city council members would get together and plan things out. They were approving a city manager's contract for over $800,000 a year in tiny city of Bell outside of a public meeting. That's a pretty good example. Most of the examples that I have within the Bay Area with the districts I work in regularly are district attorneys who've gotten upset about particularities. And I'll tell you, if you wait a little bit, I'll give you an example when we talk about committees, because that's the hot topic that all the district attorneys are looking at right now. Are your committees complying with the Brown Act? So we'll come back to that. And I'm not going to start over for you on the Brown Act, but just to let you know where we are. Welcome. What we're doing is, I'm going through this document. It's the overview of the Brown Act. And it looks like it's a PowerPoint. It's really just for purposes of discussion. There you go. And we're on page four, down at the bottom of page four. And we've already touched on this, so I'll just touch on it again briefly. What is talked about in the Brown Act is you can't use an intermediary to have a meeting outside of your notice public meeting. And an intermediary can include a telephone, you know, you're doing something by telephone, an email, a text message, a chat room, or social media. So I want to pause on that for a minute about chat rooms and social media. True story, we had a school board member who, for whatever reason, we all have our handles that we use when we're on social media. Mine is Gromit. There's a little cartoon character called Gromit. I always use Gromit. This person used Fluffy Bunny 22. That was, I don't know why, what the relationship was with the Fluffy Bunny, but it was Fluffy Bunny 22. They went into a chat room and started posting their thoughts on an issue relevant to the school district, not knowing that there were two other board members in the chat room. The other two board members didn't know that Fluffy Bunny 22 was their board president. And so they sat there and they went through all of this, and after all of that was done, on a later day, they found out they had three board members in the room, in the room, right? The virtual room. And two of those board members knew that they were there, but they weren't saying anything. But they didn't know that the comments they were listening to with the ideas about what the district should do on something were coming from their board president. That was a Brown Act violation. That was an unknowing Brown Act violation, but that's one of the reasons why you have to be really thoughtful about using social media and knowing whether your other board members are on it. We had one city that wanted to have a virtual town hall through social media, and school board members wanted to attend, and we just advised, "Make sure no more than two of you attend, so that there's no question later that there was a quorum of the board involved with that." So this is the cutting-edge issue right now. Emails, social media. You don't see the Brown Act violations like the city of Bell did, where it's a secret meeting behind closed doors anymore. What you see are the emails flying around. And people know this, and they're getting more and more sophisticated when they make Public Records Act requests of the district. They now ask for emails by the thousands. And there's actually a case pending in front of the California Supreme Court, which should be decided literally any day now, that will address the issue of whether your personal emails, if they're about district business, are discoverable under the Public Records Act. So be very circumspect when you're communicating on district business, because any of those communications may be discoverable, and all it takes is somebody putting together, "Wait, there were three people on the board, all in that chat room. There were three people that were communicating with each other by email, and you have an accusation of a Brown Act violation."
So shouldn't there be, then, should the district give board members email addresses, so that, you know, if you're communicating district business, you don't have to subject your personal email to that level of scrutiny?
Yeah. That's a decision that each board has to make. I know that the trend is in that direction. School districts increasingly, more and more and more, are providing addresses for their school board members. Be aware, though, that if you make the decision to do that, make sure you're using your school board email, because you may be finding yourself being interviewed by the police or the district attorney or on the stand at a trial and ask the question, "Do you always make sure all of the school business goes into your district email?" If the answer is, "No, sometimes I get it personally," they can still reach into your personal email. So if you're going to go in that direction, don't go halfway. Go all the way and really use it for all district business.
I was going to ask the same question, but I think that's easier to separate. Other board members I've interacted with, they have district email accounts.
Yeah.
So we have to vote on that?
Yeah. That would be, well, that's a decision you could, I'm sure, give direction to staff on and chat about it. But, you know, what I would say is that 10 years ago, probably a tenth of the school districts in the state had board member email addresses, and now probably 75% do. It's estimating, just based on the districts I work with, but it's been a huge shift, I think, for this very reason.
But when your personal email is subpoenaed, then that becomes an issue. Is that correct?
Yeah. And it doesn't mean that your personal email won't still be subpoenaed, but it's easier, it is arguably easier, and it depends how this California Supreme Court decision comes down, to protect your personal email when you can say, "There's no district business in there." And my practice as a board member is if I receive, if somebody sends me something to my personal email that's business-related to the district, I forward it to my district email address. So it adds a level of protection. So something worth thinking about. But it's not on the agenda tonight, so we're not going to discuss it, because I don't want you to get in Brown Act trouble. But something to talk about in the future. I had mentioned in at the top of the next page, there's this slide on one-way transmission of information. And I wanted to pause on this for a minute, because this is really confusing under the Brown Act and really unclear. There is a specific code section in the Brown Act that was added maybe three years ago that says that agency employees and officials can provide information to you, one-way information directly to you, as long as they're not telling you what the position of another board member is. So you can have dialogue with your superintendent. That's not a Brown Act problem. The law was clarified. But the superintendent can't tell you what any other board member's position is on this. And this is a subtle little thing, because remember, I said earlier, two board members can have a conversation. It's not a Brown Act violation. But under this part of the Brown Act, the superintendent can't tell you the position of one other board member, even though that only counts to two, you and the other board member. They can't tell you the position of any other board member. And the reason I wanted to pause on this, this is a newish statute, again, about three years old. There's an interesting, open legal question under it, is if the superintendent can't transmit the position of any other board member to any of you, why can one of you transmit your position to one other board member? Which has always been allowed under the Brown Act, as long as you don't count to five. That's why I responded to the question earlier about, it's a little bit fuzzy. So now, under this new law, does it mean that a board member can't communicate their position to even one other board member? Well, no court has said that yet. The attorney general hasn't said that yet. I haven't seen a district attorney push the issue. But I plant the seed, because again, even having two board members having a discussion, somebody could potentially raise that issue. So if I were on a board, I'm going to be careful about not talking about district business with more than one other board member, and even if it's one other board member, I'm going to really think about, should I just save this for a board meeting? And have it all be as much public as possible, because it's a little unsettled. And that's why, you know, we say here, "Avoid communicating a position." And I'll give you an example here. Often, a board member will want to communicate. Let's say you have a board member, and I'm going to pick, this has nothing to do with any of you. It's an example I deal with a lot. Let's say you have a board member who is a fan of charter schools. And that board member wants to communicate a pro-charter school article that was in the New York Times, and they send it out to all the other board members with no comment. You can argue that's a one-way transmission of information. It's not a Brown Act problem, but isn't that board member implying to the other board members, "Hey, this is something I support. I like this." Wouldn't it be better to give that article to the superintendent, and maybe in the Friday packet, for example, the superintendent can distribute, "Here's all the articles that board members wanted to be shared, and you don't know who it is that forwarded the article." So five, 10 years ago, you'd hit send, you'd send an article out to the board, "Hey, wanted to make you aware of this." And now, we increasingly advise, go through the superintendent and have the communications flow that way, which again allows the superintendent to look at something and say, "Do we have a Brown Act problem if I send this out?" If it's an email that says, "I am absolutely..." Well, I'll give you a specific example. It just came up recently in another district. A board member went on social media on their Facebook page and stated what their position was on something that was going to be voted on by the board. "My position is this for these reasons." The board member then forwarded that to the superintendent and asked the superintendent to forward that to the rest of the board. And after consulting with us, the superintendent said, "No, because I'm communicating the position of a board." It's not just a New York Times article at that point. It's your position communicating to the rest of the board. The other thing in that case is, should that board member have gone on to their Facebook page and stated how they were going to vote on something? They invite a Brown Act, it's their free speech, but they invite the Brown Act violation, because what if two of you happen to stumble on their Facebook page? Now, an intermediary, Facebook, has informed you what the position of another board member is. So there really is this kind of chilling effect of the Brown Act on how you go out there and look at social media, what you want to post on social media. And that hasn't played out yet. It's just areas to be careful with.
Yeah, because I think constituents ask all the time on certain issues, how a board member is going to vote, because oftentimes, there's a rumor mill, and there's no way to know. I don't think there's any way to know who's doing what or who's saying what. But I think often, the constituents do want to know.
Yeah.
And I could see how a board member would be in that position. If they're on Facebook with the constituent, then the constituent is asking, "Well, how are you going to vote? Who are you going to vote for? What are you going to do?"
Yeah.
Because they want to know if they need to come and support an issue, or if they don't need to support an issue. So it's just such a great area.
It is. It's tough. And to the extent you could communicate individually back to that person, you are allowed to say, "Here is my feeling on this subject."
It's your feeling, but no, you can't give conjecture about what somebody else might be thinking.
Right. You can't say, "I think the rest of the board is..." And I cannot tell you how many times I've seen social media from board members that say, "The rest of my board opposes this, but I'm going to vote in favor of it because..." That's really tough. The other thing, and this is a board governance issue beyond the Brown Act and beyond our topic today, my favorite answer when I talk to an elected official actually is not, "Yes, I agree with you." It's, "I'm going to listen to what you have to say. I'm going to listen to what the other side's going to have to say, and then the night, you know, be there when we vote, and you'll hear where I'm going to come out." To me, that's good board governance. That's listening to both sides, instead of telecasting what it is you're going to say. With the current political climate in the country, and I'm not picking on any party, because I think it's everybody right now, everybody wears a shirt that says how they're going to vote on everything. I would submit, under the Brown Act, that's a very dangerous thing to do, and we haven't caught up yet with the society on that and the Brown Act. There's a note here, by the way, in the middle of this page, really easy thing to remember. Beware, reply all. When you have an email that you've received, you have to really look at who you're emailing it back to. This is in the middle of page five, because reply all can automatically get you into a Brown Act trouble. So let's say the superintendent sends something to all five board members to fill you in on something, wanted to let you know, there was vandalism at a school last night, wanted to make you aware of it before you read about it in the papers. If one of the board members hits reply all and says back, "I think this is a systemic problem, and I want to put video monitors in at all of the school sites," you've just used that communication to communicate your position on something within the subject matter jurisdiction to the rest of the board. You could have said that back to the superintendent, no problem. But when you hit reply all and you looped in all of the other board members, now you have a problem. So that reply all button is, I want to remove it from all internet sites in the world. I always joke about, you know, you ever had, when you hit send on an email, you hit send and you have that moment right after you hit send? And I always joke, it's like a pulse that goes up your arm to the back of your head, and it hits you, "Who did I just hit send that to?" As board members, more than anybody, you have to, before you hit send, look at everything you wrote, and then see who it is that it's going to. And then assume it's going to be on the front page of the paper anyway when you hit send. So be very circumspect about what you put in writing, because you don't know that it's not going to be discoverable under the Public Records Act in litigation, et cetera. So you have to be very mindful of it.
Can I ask a question? So if that is indeed the case, how would that end up on the front page of a newspaper? Like, where would that come from?
Well, so in that example, you responded to the superintendent, and you said, "I think we should do X." There's then a Public Records Act request for all emails between the board and the superintendent having anything to do with school safety. That email probably goes out there. Now, hopefully, the email didn't lead off with, "I think our district is negligent in the way that we do this and are putting students at risk." And then that goes in the front page of the paper, that, you know, board member X feels that the district is negligent. And suddenly, you have all the plaintiff's attorneys in the world saying, "Well, we have an admission that the district knows that they're not monitoring their schools correctly." It is so easy to get in trouble. It is so easy to step in problem areas under the Brown Act. And so you just really, especially with emails, because we forget when we're typing, we don't think about it this way. Here's how I think about it. If you are typing, if you're using your thumb, whatever it is, on your texts, on your emails, consider it as if you're typing it out on your old IBM Selectric on District Letterhead before you send it. And think, "Would I put this out there if it was District Letterhead? Would I put this out there if it was a formal letter?" And if your answer is, "No, it has inappropriate language, I'm saying something about somebody I might not want to have be in writing, I'm not sure who's going to see it, I'm not sure if it's going to go to a quorum of the board and will have a Brown Act problem," don't send it. In the good old days, it was easy. I always talk about with the Public Records Act, you know, 20 years ago, if somebody in a school district received an angry letter from a parent, they wouldn't rip the letter up. But now, they get an email from an angry parent, do they delete the message? It's a lot easier with email to not think of it as a formal communication. These are written communications, and as I tell my kid, "Don't put something out on social media or email it unless you want it tattooed on your forehead." Because once it's out there, you can't get it back, and you're going to walk into a job interview, and it's going to be tattooed on your forehead, virtually.
I guess what I'm asking is, if there is a communication between a board member or constituent, anybody, and then, how would the media know that that communication went out unless someone informed them?
Well--
Unless the media's included? So I'm guessing, I'm asking how?
Yeah. Well, it depends a little bit, again, on how this California Supreme Court case comes down, but what the press will ask for is all emails regarding X. And then it's up to the district to produce those emails. And if it is determined that school board members' individual email accounts are included by this case, once that request comes, you've got to make those emails available under the Public Records Act. If you don't disclose one, if you hold on to one and you don't make it public, and the press later learns that it's out there because a constituent provides it, or it shows up one way or the other, you've now violated the Public Records Act. And that's getting off of our Brown Act topic, but again, it's--
Right. I'm just asking the how.
Yeah.
Because email communication is technically private.
Not very much so. You know, the, again, I'm not going to go too much into detail on that right now, but--
No, I'm just saying technically.
Yeah. I've had two different instances where I've had people with dogs and guns and badges and warrants walk in and remove board members' individual computers. When there's been an allegation of a Brown Act violation, I've had to stand in the driveway of a board member while the police removed their personal server from the house and searched all of their emails, because there was an alleged Brown Act violation. So when we talk about that right to privacy, if they have a warrant, if they've convinced a judge, there's evidence there may have been a Brown Act violation, or corruption, or whatever else it's doing, even if there isn't, they're going to be able to search your computer. So you have to be careful.
Yeah. I have a question. I mean, it seems, the accessibility in regards to social media, I mean, I'm new to the board. Constituents can email you numerous times, and they could track to see if you've read the email or not. So how does that work in regards to, maybe you don't want to read the email to weigh my vote a certain way?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm open-minded, but--
You know, if you've--
I just think that parents emailing board members, in a way, is not appropriate.
Yeah. I mean, that's up to you as an individual board member to decide if that's the method of communication you want to have with your constituency. I have worked with board members over the years who make very publicly known, "I don't respond to emails." If you want to talk to me about something, here's my phone number, here's, I'll meet you for coffee, we'll chat about it, talk to me after the board meeting. But I don't, I've even had board members say, "I don't check my emails. I don't check my texts." And that's your personal choice. It's completely up to you. Obviously, if you're not checking those things, the odds of a violation for the Brown Act drop considerably. So I want to spend a little bit of time talking to, but I mentioned earlier, the hot topic topic right now amongst the law enforcement community with the Brown Act are committees. So when we talk about where I'm seeing the most attention, a lot of school districts get this wrong on a regular basis. It's complicated and confusing and difficult. So I'm going to take you through it a little bit. So down at the bottom of the page, you'll see something that says that a committee, the board has a committee or a subcommittee, that could be a committee of you all or a community committee or staff committee, any committee that you appoint. If they're created by resolution or other formal action of the governing board, they're a Brown Act body. They're a legislative body within the meaning of the Brown Act. Now, it's really easy. If the board votes to appoint members to a citizens' bond oversight committee or a citizens' budget committee or something like that, that's a Brown Act body. The board took formal action to appoint. But the courts have interpreted and the attorney general interprets very broadly what formal action is, and it doesn't have to be all that formal. So if the superintendent comes to you and says, I'm appointing a superintendence committee and I just wanted to let the board know that I'm appointing this committee, these are going to be the members that are going to advise me on budget, for example, that's not a Brown Act body. That's just the superintendent informing you. If the superintendent adds the following words, does that sound okay to all of you? And five board members nod, yes, that is a formal action of the board even though you didn't vote. So you have to kind of have a dividing line as to, as to how are your committees being appointed? Once the board gets involved, it's going to become more formal. And if you'll flip the page, now is where it gets really confusing. What the Brown Act says is that generally, any committee that this board appoints is going to be a Brown Act body. And when I say a Brown Act body, that means they have to agendize their meetings, post their agendas, allow public comment. It may not be as formal as your meetings, but it does make it a more formal meeting overall. Here's an exception. This is not a Brown Act body. If you have a committee that is purely advisory with no decision-making body, that's step one. So you're not giving any authority to them, they're just going to advise. Two, they have to be composed solely of less than a quorum of your board. What does that mean? You have five board members? You can have a subcommittee or a committee of the board of two board members. If the committee is two board members and the mayor, you're out of luck. It's got to just be two board members to fit the second criteria. If you add staff to your committee as more than staff members but as committee members, if you add community members, those all become Brown Act bodies even though there's less than a quorum of you on it. Third, there can be no ongoing subject matter jurisdiction. And I'll take you through some examples of that in a moment. And lastly, the meeting schedule of the subcommittee can't be fixed by the governing board. So you can't say, we're going to appoint these two committee members, they're going to meet every third Wednesday for six months and then report back. So it's very narrow when you have a subcommittee that is not a Brown Act body. Here's an example, there was a case that came out. There was a city council, they were trying to figure out what the planning commission's comments were on a draft of an environmental impact report, an environmental document, hundreds of pages of comments. There was no way five city council members were going to sit and read all of that, but two were particularly interested. So they volunteered to be a committee of the board, subcommittee, that would just get together on their own schedule, so it wasn't a schedule that was formally fixed, chat about it and come back and say, this is what, we're summarizing the comments, this is what they said. So you go down the list. It's purely advisory, they're not making any decisions. It's composed less than a quorum of the board, nobody else, two city council members in that case. No continuing subject matter jurisdiction, they were going to go to coffee a few times and be done. And their meeting schedule was not fixed by the governing board. So the court said, that is not a Brown Act body. It's interesting though, that somebody sued, right? To say it was a Brown Act body and they violated the Brown Act. And as an aside, who sued? Somebody who opposed the development project. And that's a theme under the Brown Act. The Brown Act has a really important role in California, but it's also a great way for people who don't like something you're doing to try to impede progress, to say, wait about the Brown Act. And I'll give you a dirty lawyer secret here. When I am asked to look at what a city may have done or a county may have done when I'm representing a school district where we're opposed to what they do, the first thing I do is I try to find the Brown Act violation to shut down what the city's doing and make them stop in their tracks. And about a third of the time, I found a Brown Act violation. And about a third of that time, they actually listen to me and slow their course. That's what the lawyers out there will do when they're looking at something you're unhappy about. Every school closure case I've been involved with, every textbook controversy I've been involved with, every religion in schools issue, any of the most controversial issues we deal with, I see accusations of Brown Act violations. Because it's a way for the community to try to stop that progress from going forward. I say the community, it may be one person, to try to stop it from moving forward. So I've got some examples just to run through really quickly with you to kind of reinforce this on committees, about which committee is subject to the Brown Act and which isn't. And this is taken loosely again from the Attorney General's handbook on the Brown Act. So the first one is you have a commission comprised of all board members, the superintendent and parents. That's going to be a Brown Act body because there's no exemption that's applicable to it. You have all of you participating and it's not a quorum, or less than a quorum and it involves the committee. It's a Brown Act body. If you want to argue, well, we board members didn't form the committee, we were invited by the community. It's really tough to argue when you have five board members who go accept that invitation that there wasn't an action by the board because all five board members decided to go do it. So that's going to be probably seen as a formal action. The next one is you've got an advisory committee comprised solely of two board members for the purpose of reviewing school safety issues on an ongoing basis. It's a standing committee, meaning it's a Brown Act body. It's not an ad hoc committee because it's an on and ongoing basis. So you see how it's, all these little nuances get you. And the next one, an advisory committee comprised solely of two board members that meets the second Tuesday of every month pursuant to governing board direction. Again, it's a Brown Act body because the meetings are set at the direction of the board. The next one, advisory committee comprised of two board members for the purpose of producing a report on student achievement in six months. Aha! It's not a Brown Act body. At least arguably, it's not. Because it's an ad hoc committee in the sense that it's temporary, it's only six months, you haven't set the agenda of when they're going to meet, it's less than a quorum of the board, nobody else sits on the committee and you're only giving advice, you're not making a decision. So it's not a Brown Act problem. And then the last one, a superintendent's ongoing advisory committee on which one board member serves. Here's a really interesting one. This has not been settled in the law. But what we put down at the bottom is our opinion that if the board member serves at the direction or with the consent of the board, it's probably a Brown Act body. So if the superintendent says, I'm forming this committee and I'd like the board president to be on it, and the board nods their heads, yes, it's probably back to being a standing committee. The reason I emphasize all of this is I'm seeing district after district after district get volunteer citizens in trouble with the district attorney's office by asking them to be on committees and not thinking through whether they're Brown Act bodies and then not giving the committee any training on the Brown Act. And that seems to be where the district attorney is most focused, particularly Contra Costa County, we've seen a lot of activity on that front. So you want to be careful when you're forming committees. Just ask the question, is this a Brown Act body? Ask the superintendent, ask the district's lawyers to think about it as you go forward because again, that's the sort of hot topic. Going on to the next page, I'm going to go through some nuts and bolts now on the Brown Act, which are really about rules around your agendas and your meetings. So when can the governing board meet? There's two different ways you can notice a board meeting in general. One is it's a regular meeting, it's 72 hours' notice. What that means is your agenda's posted at least 72 hours in advance of the meeting. And two is it's a special meeting, that's 24 hours, you have to post at least 24 hours in advance. You can always give more notice, you can't give less notice. The reason I want to focus on that for a moment is that I had this wrong for 20 years. I will just tell you this. I was finally convinced by my partners, I lost the argument. I thought that a regular meeting was a meeting that you noticed 72 hours in advance and a special meeting was a meeting you noticed 24 hours in advance. That's what all of our school lawyers in our firm thought. But then the city attorneys convinced us that we were wrong. Because the rule in the city is, a regular meeting is a meeting that was fixed on a date by the city council at the beginning of the year. It's part of its regular meeting calendar. And for those meetings, you had to give 72 hours' notice. And any other meeting is a special meeting. And that's probably correct. That's something that, for whatever reason, cities and counties were conscious of and school districts weren't. The reason that's so incredibly important is there are some actions you can only take at a regular meeting. And so a district will say, well, we want to approve the superintendent's contract, which is supposed to happen, by the way, at a regular meeting under current California law. And I've had districts that got in trouble because they set the meeting 72 hours in advance, they give the 72 hour notice, but it wasn't on the calendar of meetings that the board adopted at the beginning of the year. You can amend that calendar, you can take formal board action to change that calendar and add regular meetings. But you have to kind of be thoughtful and mindful about that. So as you sit here at meetings, think about, is it a special meeting, is it a regular meeting? There's a huge distinction between a regular meeting and a special meeting, which is this. At a regular meeting, members of the public can comment on anything within your jurisdiction. You have your public comment period, anything having to do with school districts, they can talk about. At a special meeting, they can only comment on what's on your agenda. They can't comment on something that's not on the agenda. So if you have a controversial issue over a particular course that the district's, a math course, let's say that the district's offering, it's not on your agenda at your regular meeting, members of the public can still comment on it. It's not on your agenda at a special meeting, let's say a special meeting like a Brown Act workshop that you've noticed as a special meeting, somebody can't then comment on that math program. So it's important for you and the public to know what the scope of the comments that are allowed. You'll also see there's a category for emergency meetings, you never have to have one of those. You are allowed on less than 24 hours' notice to call an emergency meeting only if it has to do with the ability to continue providing services. I've had one, no, I've had two, excuse me, in these many years. The example I was going to give you is I had a school district that had severe flooding during 1997, during the big El Nino flooding down in Monterey County. They literally didn't know if they were going to try to have school the next day or not because there were schools that were cut off from neighborhoods where you couldn't get through. And they wanted to make the decision with the board. So they called a meeting on one hour's notice. It was not a violation of the Brown Act because clearly it was about continuing services. Could we continue to have classes the next day? So very, very rare. There are a million things I can give you examples of that are not emergencies. I've gotten many calls over the year, was it an emergency because we really, we forgot to agendize this and it's less than 24 hours and, gosh, we really want to get the contract going to build the new school? The answer is no. It's really a threat to human safety or your ability to provide classes. Where can the board meet? There's a little slide there for you about it, really simple rules on that. Usually you have to meet within the boundaries of the district. There are some rare exceptions. You can go outside the boundaries of the district to interview an employee for litigation. Let's say you, there's a lawsuit where the board wants to be at the mediation and the mediation's being held in San Francisco. You can properly go there. You stopped to notice it as a meeting, but you can go across the bridge and head over that way. One thing I don't mention on this slide, but I wanted to mention here tonight, is teleconferences because there's a lot of confusion about this. Can board members call into a board meeting? It's kind of a where the board can meet category. The answer is yes, board members can call in if the agenda says that they're calling in. So it can't be a surprise to the public. So we get calls all the time, ooh, a board member's going to be late to the meeting, can they call in? The answer is no, because the agenda doesn't say that they're calling in. It's the first thing. Second thing is, at least a quorum of you have to be located within the boundaries of the district. It could be an all telephonic meeting theoretically, it's not the most productive meeting in the world, but theoretically, as long as three of you are located in the district. The third thing is that you have to post the agenda at each location. So if you're calling in from your house, you are posting an agenda at your house. True story, I was in Luxembourg, I love this story. I was in Luxembourg and I'm walking down the hall of my hotel in Luxembourg where I'm on vacation, tiny little duchy, it's 17 acres wide, it's very cute. And I'm walking down the hall of this hotel and there's a guy on the phone with his door open. And as I pass by, like why does this person have his door propped open when he's on the phone in his hotel room? I see that there's an agenda outside posted on the wall with tape, or a mosquito, it's the Modesto mosquito abatement district for a meeting. And I thought, he did it right. Because not only do you have to post the agenda, you have to allow the public to be present while you're on the phone. So we get a lot of calls too about, we're going to be on the road, can they call in? Not unless people are running alongside the car and are able to listen in on it, you can't do it. So basically, all of the, I'll answer all of your questions in advance, board member didn't know they weren't going to be able to make the meeting, it's after the agenda was posted, are you able to call in? The answer is probably going to be no. The one exception, maybe for closed session, and that's a really complicated one, which I'm going to let you talk to your lawyers about if it ever comes up. Because it's a little gray area there. As far as the agenda is concerned...
Is that a change?
That is actually not a change. That's been on the books. It has been done wrong by almost every public agency I've ever seen for many, many years, but it is not new. That's why I was so proud of, when I walked down the hall in Luxembourg, that some local elected official was doing it exactly right. So be cautious, I think, is the bottom line rule. At the bottom of the page, I want to talk to you a little bit about your agenda. You know, the public sees your agenda, the board sees the agenda, it's like magic, it just appears. There's these items that are going to be discussed. Every district has its own procedures as to how agendas are developed. But I wanted to pause for a few moments and chat about a few of the issues relevant to the Brown Act. One of them is that when you post your agenda, if there's an agenda packet that goes with it to the board, that has to be available to the public as well. There's a lot of confusion around that because if the staff is going to pack something out at the board meeting, it doesn't have to be made available to the public in advance. They get it the same time you do. And there's a lot of confusion that comes around there, well, I see it on the agenda, I want to see this. Sometimes the answer is, it doesn't exist yet. It's an agenda item, but the materials are still being prepared. If the agenda gets posted 72 hours in advance and the materials become available 48 hours in advance and go to the board 48 hours in advance, they have to be made available to the public at the same time. That's just the rule of the Brown Act. And that's a fairly recent development under the Brown Act. They all get it at the same time. What about...
Would that, could that be in hard copy? Would they come down and pick it up? Or given today's climate, would that have to be electronically...
Yeah.
...get access on the computer?
Until January 1st of 2019, you can give them a hard copy. Effective January 1st, 2019, it has to be on your website. So they're forcing everybody to put everything on their website. If it's already on your website, you should provide it electronically. If it's not on your website, you don't have to put it on as of today, just to be able to make it available that way. What about board requests for agenda items? That's something else I wanted to mention, is that every district has its rules about how agenda items are added for the board. So you have your own rules about the board members adding. The bottom line rule under the Brown Act is you generally have no more or less right to add items to an agenda than a member of the public. So a mistake some school districts make, say, members of the public can ask to add items to the agenda, but our board members can't. Well, board members are members of the public, but you're not allowed to demand that something gets put on in a way necessarily the public doesn't. So it's kind of a parallel rule for you and the public. So what the rule for the public is, there's an education code section on this, this is not in the Brown Act. And this rule does not apply to cities or counties, it's only for school districts, that any member of the public can request that an item be added to your agenda. It's kind of an unusual rule, actually. It has to be within the subject matter of the board. And I do mean the board. There was a case that came down that was really interesting called the Mooney case out of San Jose Unified School District a few years ago where a school in the school district decided to have a diversity day. There was a parent who apparently didn't like diversity and was upset that they were having a diversity day. And so they demanded that the board put on its agenda this school having a diversity day. And the school board said, you know what, that's not in our jurisdiction. Because that's a decision that's the school site, the board doesn't weigh in on it, the district office, that's a completely local decision. Went all the way up to the California Supreme Court and the California Supreme Court said, that's right. That's not in the jurisdiction of the board because the board doesn't decide which different school within the district was going to have a diversity day. But if it's clearly within your jurisdiction, if the board is looking at issues about textbooks and somebody wants to add a specific item about textbooks, you're going to have to add it. You get to decide when it's added, you get to decide how it gets added. If they demand that it's an open session topic but involves student privacy issues, you can decide to put it on closed session. You still control your agenda, but a member of the public can ask that it be added. And I actually put at the top of the next page, page nine, you have a very specific board policy, this is not a standard board policy on, board policy 9322. A member of the public can ask for it to make a presentation to the board and they get a time limit of 15 minutes. That is unique to Antioch. To some districts, it's 10 minutes, some districts, there's no allotment of time at all. Under your rules, there's only one of these presentations per meeting. So if five different people want to present on five topics, you can space them out over five or more meetings. Again, it has to be within the board's jurisdiction and your policy gives the board president and the superintendent authority to say no if it is something that is really just, for example, an advertisement. And there's a list of other categories, but one of them that stands out is marketing. So if a gym that has a kids' program wants to come and sell their wares here because they want parents here to join in, and they tell you it's under the guise of physical fitness in the community, and the board president and the superintendent determine, no, they're just here to advertise, you can say no under your policy and that's an appropriate thing to do.
So when they ask to put something on the board agenda, that's not the same night? It's going to be sometime in the future?
Right. It actually can't be the same night because the whole idea is that the public has a right to know what you're going to talk about at a board meeting. So if you add it that night, you're not going to be able to give them that notice.
But let me just say, a board member can add an item to the agenda if the entire board agrees at the meeting that night. Isn't that correct?
It depends. To add it to the agenda for that night, the answer would be no. So because again, the public wouldn't know. The whole concept is that somebody at home has to know what you're going to discuss that night to know whether they want to come to your meeting or not. So if you decide that night, we're going to add this agenda item, technically you violated that 72 or 24 hour notice requirement.
Well, we can in the meeting say, we want to add this to the agenda for the next Well, we can in the meeting say, we want to add this to the agenda for the next meeting, or...
Right. You can always direct that it be added to a future agenda. And I'll actually take you through, because the next slide talks about this. There's a few exceptions, where you can add something without the 72-hour notice or the 24-hour notice.
Because someone did that, that's why I brought it up. Go ahead.
So just to give you the idea, these are really the four categories of what you can do. The first one is an emergency situation. Same thing we talked about before. If something comes up as you're driving into the board meeting, and it's not on your agenda, and it may affect your ability to have school the next day, you can add it to your agenda that night. That was the other example I thought of. I had a school district where I was literally walking into their board meeting, found out that one of their schools had just burned down, like literally an hour or two before. They were still putting out the flames. We added that to the agenda, because there was a question about whether there was going to be school the next day. Again, a rare exception. There's another category, which is often abused, it's not to be used a lot, it's subsequent need items. With this is, something comes up after you posted the agenda, that there is an urgent need to take an action on, and you didn't know about it before the agenda happened. Two-thirds of your board, so four of you, can vote to add to the agenda that night, this item. This is rare, because usually, it's not that you didn't know about it in advance, it's that somebody forgot to put it on. That's different. This is, you didn't know about it in advance. I'm going to give you a specific example. We had a school district that had a federal grant. To get the grant renewed, they had to submit the paperwork with a board resolution by a particular night. And the federal government failed to send the notice to that effect to the school district until, literally, I think it was 24 hours before the meeting. So we added that as a subsequent need item, because they were going to lose a million dollars if we didn't take immediate action. And it came to the board's attention after the posting of the agenda. The other way that you can do this, here's a trick I will teach you, don't use it a lot, because it is a trick, but it's completely legal, it's just something you want to watch for. If something arises less than 72 hours before a regular meeting, but more than 24 hours, so let's say 48 hours beforehand, something comes up, it's too late to add it to your regular board meeting, but it's not too late to have a special meeting. You can have a special meeting the same night as your regular board meeting, and add it that way. So as long as you're over the 24-hour mark, you can do that. You don't want to make a habit of that, because it starts to look like you're playing a game. You're not telling people things in advance. But every now and then, it's a good way to add something. So there are ways to try to get items on sometimes, if they were missed. And then, there's a couple other categories here to mention. One is held over items. There's a very specific rule in the Brown Act. School districts get this wrong all over the place. What it says is that you can continue an item for up to five days, without having to re-agendaize it. Only five days, though, not two weeks, not three months, it's only five days. I'll give you an example there. I was in Albany Unified School District. We were having a hearing, very contentious hearing, over adding lights to a playing field. And we had hundreds of speakers, for or against, and it was a very controversial topic. And at about 12:30 at night, it became clear, with probably over 100 speaker cards to go, we were not going to finish that night. So the board continued the meeting to the next day, and held the item over to the next day, and just picked up where they left off with the same board meeting, without having to post 72 hours in advance. All they had to do was put up an agenda at the site, so that people knew that it had been continued. Again, doesn't come up a lot, but it's something I wanted to mention. And then the last one here, I'll talk about in a moment, I'm not going to cover it here, because it's on the next page as well, is what do you do when there are public comments? What can the board, how can the board respond to public comments? So I'll come back to that, because I want to hit first the slide at the bottom of the page. Here's Harold's Rule of Board Governance. If there's no other rule here, this is an important one. A school board meeting is a meeting of the board held in public, not a meeting of the public held in front of the board. I say that for a reason. This is where you do your business, and the public is allowed to watch you do your business, but they're not allowed to interfere with the way that you do your business. The idea is that they watch, they participate at the moments that they're allowed to participate, but this is when you got to get your work done. And the example I always give, and it's a funny example, but I give it anyway, I went to a school board, where I walked in and they had six board members. That's very unusual. Board members, odd numbers. It's five or seven usually. Why do they have six board members? And only five of the board members had plates that looked like yours. The other one had a plate that looked different, with their name on it. And it said "board member" under it. I was very confused by this. What I found out at the end of the meeting was that this person was not on the board, they were voted off of the board, but they wouldn't leave. So they made their own nameplate, and they continued to attend board meetings. And they would participate, and they would comment. And I looked at the board, and I found out about this, that the board president and the superintendent, when I asked who this person was after the fact and was told about this, and I said, this is your meeting. They're attending your meeting. They have to be in the audience, they have to speak when they're recognized, they can't interrupt you, they don't sit on the board. And they were just nice people, and they were having trouble telling this person that they had to go sit in the audience. But we got there eventually. So it is your meeting that the public watches. As part of that, and at the top of the next page, you'll see, public comment is allowed, people are allowed to record, they're allowed to photograph, they're allowed to videotape, they're not allowed to disrupt. So if somebody wants to set up a camera right in front of where I'm standing right now, you can ask them. It's going to block people's view to move it to the side. There's even rules in the Brown Act about disruptions, and I won't go into that with you tonight, but there's specific things that you can do to help control disruptions. The most extreme of which is that you can empty the room. Because it's your meeting. And if you're not allowed to be having your meeting because of the disruptions they're having, you can empty the room and continue your meeting. The only people that are allowed to stay at that point are staff and the press. Unless, this is an important rule, the press is the one who caused the disruption. And yes, I've been on those meetings too. And there's materials in this larger handbook that we've sent out to all of our clients. Page 121 of the handbook has an actual script for the board president on how to deal with disruptions. So just something to make you aware of. How does the board respond to comments? So now you've had these public comments, the Brown Act is very specific. There's very little you can do in response to public comment on an item that's not on the agenda. So during the general public comment period, you can respond briefly. What's a brief response? Thank you for your comments. That's a brief response. You're not going to give a substantive response. You can ask or answer questions. When I say ask or answer questions, these are clarifying questions. So if you literally didn't understand what the speaker said, you can ask them. Or if you didn't hear something they said, you can ask them. If they ask you a question, generally, you're not going to answer it, you're going to refer it to staff. That's how it's going to be handled. So if somebody says, I want to know, did the board on X date do X, Y, and Z, you don't engage in a dialogue, because that's not the purpose of that public comment period. You can refer matters to staff, and you can ask to add things to future agendas. We talked about that a little bit. The important thing here is you can't engage in a dialogue, because that subject is not on your agenda. Which means the public didn't know the board was going to be talking about it. So every time I go to a board meeting, and I hear a board member say, I agree with that, and when there's a speaker, it's a Brown Act problem. You've got to just listen, be gracious, say thank you, and move on. And sometimes you have to educate the audience on why you're not responding to their questions, or responding in detail. It's because the Brown Act protects them. It protects their ability to know what you're going to talk about.
Yeah. We had a situation that happened. There's an item that was on the agenda, and then a request for a special meeting, and then now it's back on the agenda, but the public comment was against that particular agenda item. So should you address the superintendent about that? It was like against educational training. And I'm baffled by that.
Certainly.
In a public comment from...
If it's a general public comment that is baffling like that, you can certainly refer to the superintendent and say, would you like a report back from staff about the subject matter?
But it does not have to be on the agenda again, if it'd be a special meeting.
Right.
And you don't have to go back and forth.
Right. And there are rules under Robert's Rules of Order, you're a Robert's Rules of Order district, about once you've decided something, or once you've taken it up, you don't have to continually be asked to take up the same thing again and again and again.
Yeah. So I'm understanding, it could be a subsequent need item.
Well, subsequent need is different. Subsequent need is something new has happened, something unforeseen has come up before the meeting, after the agenda was posted, and immediate action is needed. So it's a very narrow category of what you can add. It doesn't come up very often.
Can we clarify that again? Because I want to understand what she's saying, because I'm not getting what she's saying.
Okay. Well, let me ask the board member to clarify.
Okay. I feel governance training is part of, it was part of our conference, it was on the agenda, and then now it's on the agenda again. So I'm not understanding that.
I thought you said something else about a public comment.
The public comment was that stated that we did not need training, which I was, that's why I was baffled. They didn't seem to understand why we, the board needed training.
Right.
Yes.
Did you want to...
Yeah, I wanted to say that that particular item was back on the agenda because of an unforeseen event, which was that once I was given a direction, that conference that I was given a direction to send the board number to, the registration was closed. So now the request is to attend it in a different place. I don't have authorization, so it comes back.
Right. Which is really a different issue than the original issue. I mean, it's a new issue in that sense. Yeah. And this is, you know...
So it shouldn't be agendized.
It should be agendized, because you are asking for board direction on something that hasn't been given before, which is to do the second or separate or different training. Right?
And I think the question is, correct me if I'm wrong, the public, if it's on the agenda, they have, they can say, pretty much...
If it's on the agenda, they can address it, they have to stay on the agenda item. And you can put reasonable restrictions, two minutes, three-minute limits on what they're going to do. There is, by the way, a new rule that's just gone into effect this year, so a lot of districts are caught unaware. If you have somebody who has a translator with them, and it's not a simultaneous translation service, like where you have the headphones, you have to double the time that they're allowed. That's a new rule. But you can put reasonable restrictions, two minutes, three minutes. If you see 100 people to speak on an item, you can cut it down to one minute if you have to do it. And they have to stay within that item. So if they start straying into other areas, you can tell them, this is the comment period on that item. We're going to stay with that item.
Unless it's on, unless it was commented, the item's not on the agenda, which they can comment on any...
Right. During the general public comment period. And there is one general public comment period. So if they miss that, and they decide to use some later agenda item as their moment to discuss other things, that's, they missed their opportunity. I am sensitive to time, so I want to take you through just a few more slides to get you out of here. One of the things I wanted to touch bases on, and I kind of already talked about at the bottom of page 10, is just the distribution of writings. Basically, when they go to you, they go to the public. So if they didn't go to you until the meeting, they go to the public at the meeting. We get questions sometimes, what if somebody in the public brought documents to give to you? Do you have to make them available at the meeting? The answer is no, because the Brown Act recognizes you don't have a photocopier with you. But if somebody asks for that after the meeting, you have to give it to them. It's a public document, once it's been given to you. And sometimes, you know, it'll be apparent about their student. Obviously, you're not going to give that out, because that's an exception, there's confidential information on it. Really, most of the rest of the time, I'm going to talk about two topics, and I'm going to go off-script here, so I can wrap things up for you. One of them is about closed session, and the other is about what happens if there's a violation of the Brown Act. And those are really the last two topics to take care of. I mentioned at the beginning, the rule is, and this is written right in the Brown Act, that closed session is an exception to the general rule that everything is an open. And it's a statutory rule, that it's prohibited to go into closed session unless you're specifically authorized by some statute that says you can go into closed session. The Brown Act lists, and on page 11 in the middle slide, a number of categories you can go into closed session for, but even those are narrow. So the first one you'll note is real property negotiations. Does that mean you can go into closed session with somebody you want to sell property to and negotiate with them? The answer is no. The Brown Act is very specific. You can meet with your negotiator, whoever's representing you, your Realtor, your superintendent, your CBO, to talk about only two things, price and terms. Those are the categories you're supposed to talk about in closed session. So even when you're allowed into closed session, it's narrow. The second category is litigation, and that's the greatest oversimplification I could possibly make. On your agendas, you'll see something that says, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, one matter, case number blah, blah, blah versus blah, blah, blah. You have to say all of that. And you have to be conferring with your attorney. I'm convinced attorneys wrote this, because they wanted to be able to attend board meetings, and charge you to attend board meetings, because there are times you shouldn't have to have your lawyer there. But you have to have your lawyer there in person or by phone, is what the Brown Act says. There's all these categories for employment, and there's specific rules around hiring, firing, discipline, that as to when you can go into closed session, who you can go into the closed session with. Labor negotiations, there's various exceptions for, both under the RADA Act and under the Brown Act. Not in the Brown Act, but in the education code, you can go into closed session to discuss certain student discipline matters. So expulsions, expulsion hearings can happen in closed session, unless the parents request that they be in open session. That's an exception. You can discuss public building security in closed session. For obvious reasons, you're not going to talk about a school safety plan and where exits are in the event of a terrorist attack in open session. That's going to be something that potentially the board wants to discuss in closed. But the key takeaway from this is worry less about what's allowable in closed session, and start with the assumption that it's not allowed unless it's specifically authorized. And be aware, in closed session, you have to really be careful about conversation drift. It's really easy in closed session to sort of start wandering off to a related topic. You're only there on the narrow topic you're allowed into the closed session for. Most violations of the Brown Act that happen, other than by email, are by people going into closed sessions on things they're not authorized to go into closed session for. And so you really have to be mindful for that. And one of the punishments, again, is the DA can require you to record all of your closed sessions for a year, and turn the tapes over to the district attorney. They're not made public, but you're going to have a lawyer sitting there listening to everything you said, to decide whether or not everything you said is consistent with the Brown Act.
Okay. So this goes back to kind of like my email question. Who reports that there was a closed session violation? How would one know?
Well, there's various ways it happens. One is a board member. And I've seen situations where a board member thinks there's a violation, and picks up the phone and calls the DA. We would always encourage that board member to contact the superintendent, to talk to the district's lawyers, to see if consensus can be reached first on whether there was a violation. Because sometimes it's a fuzzy area. The other thing is that people will make accusations. The only way that the board could possibly have come up with consensus on this, because we never saw it in open session, was closed session. And so we sometimes get violations accused by people who weren't there, and so you have to respond by pointing out, no, that was not discussed in the closed session. They surmise it was there.
Exactly. So how would they know? Someone from closed session would have had to have told them.
Not necessarily. They could...
You know, so that's just my point, is how does anybody know?
Yeah.
If it's closed session, and it's all board members that know?
Well, I'm going to talk in a moment about the, about release of information from closed session, and that's an important thing for us to address. But you do get cases where people accuse the board, even though they were not in the room, of you must have discussed this particular topic. And you have situations where the DA investigates it. I had one with Contra Costa County DA about two years ago, where I had to get affidavits from five board members saying, and from the superintendent, saying, no, this topic was not discussed at that closed session. And it was completely based on the community, some people coming forward and saying, well, they must have discussed it then, because the day before, this wasn't happening, and the next day, it was happening.
Except some people did have the exact information, so that's why I'm asking. How would, how would anyone know what was discussed in closed session, unless someone went back and said something? So that, anyway, I, you know, it's just...
Yeah, it depends on the circumstances. And I'll, there's a slide at the bottom of the page, I'm going to come back to that in a moment. There's a slide at the bottom of the page, just so that you know, when you take action in closed session, if it's actual action taken, you do have to report it out in the open session. The thing about that is that sometimes you don't have to report it out that night. So for example, you're negotiating a settlement agreement with an employee, and they have not yet accepted it, and the board approves it in the closed session that night, you don't have to report it out until after the employee has accepted it. But most things, you report out the action. And the reason I wanted to pause there for a moment, is that under the clarification to the Brown Act a year or two ago, I mentioned at the beginning, you have to report out who voted, how. So it's not enough to say it was a 4-1 vote. You have to say, it was a 4-1 vote with these board members voting for, and this board member against. I think it's still okay to say, it was unanimous, all five board members were present, it was unanimous. But if it's a non-unanimous vote, or if somebody was absent, you really are supposed to identify what the vote was. So that the public knows, you know, you approved a property agreement in closed session, who opposed it, who was in favor of it. in closed session, who opposed it, who was in favor of it. On the closed sessions, on the next page, the middle slide really gets to what you were just referring to, is maintaining closed session confidentiality. The rule of the Brown Act is if it's in closed session, it's the Las Vegas rule. What happens in closed session stays in closed session. You cannot reveal what happened in the closed session. It defeats the purpose of the closed session, and bad things happen. So if it's a real property negotiation, and you let out what your strategy is, you just destroyed your bargaining ability with the other party. If it's a labor and employment issue, and you let out what happened, you can get defamation actions, you can get actions by employees, you can violate people's privacy. If it's a student matter, and you let the information out, you may be violating their FERPA rights under federal law, and you could cost the district its entire federal funding, which in California may happen anyway, but for now, we still have it. So you really, you have to be extraordinarily mindful. When I go into closed session with boards, and I go home that night, I do not tell my wife what happened in closed session. I sometimes say, "You wouldn't believe the closed session I was in tonight." But I will not tell her what happened in that closed session. It is critical to maintain that confidentiality, and there are rules around the violations. So what happens if somebody is caught releasing information from closed session? And every now and then, this happens. There is specific law in the Brown Act. You can have injunctive relief. That means you get sued, and a court compels you not to release information. And if you do it again, you are then in contempt of court for violating that order, and you can be jailed. You can be fined. You can be, if an employee releases information from closed session, they can be disciplined by the board. The Brown Act is specific about that. And you can get referred to a grand jury, so the grand jury can investigate what's happening with all of this. And, not in the Brown Act, but in another part of the government code, if you release